That's why I said honorary.
Interesting.
It's like Beetlejuice.
All right, we got six to fly. But then she's been here. Tom, do you mean, are you ready? Matty Ices, you ready? All right. We'll call them in to order with.
For sure.
Brian?
Sure.
Francher? Schulte?
Yeah.
Gargano?
Here.
Canny? Eric? Friends?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
Samson? Mayor?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The council receive information on non-adjunct topics brought before the council by members of the public. The council will not discuss these topics and will not take action on any of this meeting. Is there anyone who's on the agenda which we heard? Move the consent agenda. Don't pee like that, Tom.
Sorry.
One motion approves all consent items. Item one, approve minutes for the meeting held on September twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two. Approve or deny September twenty-twenty-two paid bills. Receive September twenty-twenty-two building permit report. Proclamation designating October twenty-twenty-two as Fair Housing Month. And number five, approve or deny election poll worker Susan Litlaw. Anything on the consent or I'll take a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Schulte, seconded by Gargano. Anything further? All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have two general business items. Item one is approve or deny initial resolution forty-four eighty-four dash twenty-two, authorizing one million five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars general obligation bonds for community development projects in tax incremental districts. Carol Worth. And everyone has a little packet with. Perfect. How are you doing, Carol?
Really wonderful. How are you?
Good, good to see you.
Thank you. Good to be back.
Yes.
Okay.
You always bring us good news, so.
I do. I only come if I can bring you, but.
Yeah.
Look, I know that's.
Probably everybody does that.
Can I zoom in for this?
Okay, well, with my handout. The handout is addressing actually two financings that we're gonna bring to your attention. We're not borrowing money today. We're just gonna be talking about it. One of them is specifically related to this agenda item. And the other one is not related to this agenda item. So I can start going through my reports as it's related to this agenda item. And then we can move on to the next one if that's okay?
Sure, that works. Yep, that's what you're comfortable with. Yep.
Okay. All right, so with the report, okay, we're gonna start with why you're adopting this initial resolution, right? And this resolution itself has two things. It has a not to exceed dollar amount of a million five seventy-five. And it has what we call purpose language. And that says, well, what would you do with it? What would you do with this money? And it says, providing financial assistance to community development projects under a certain statute section for project costs in the city's tax incremental districts. Now, that is what we call statutory language. So we give, this was written by your bond attorneys, Coral and Brady. We give them a list of all the things that would be done with the money. And they take that list and they boil it down to that language. Okay, so that reads kind of strange, but that is the statutory version of anything that you'd be doing with that money. So what would the list includes is basically infrastructure improvements, right? So we have road extensions, curb and gutter, and all your utilities. So that's what would really be the funds would be used for. Now, in terms of the repayment, it's gonna go beyond ten years, right? If we were repaying this debt in ten years or less, we would not be talking about an initial resolution tonight. Because the debt is going to be repaid beyond ten years, then we go to a specific statute section that says, okay, we have to start a process that gives the council authority to borrow. So the authority to borrow starts with the adoption of an initial resolution. And then there's a second agenda item that is basically a resolution that's saying, well, now that you've adopted the initial resolution, you have to put a notice in the local paper within fifteen days that says you did this. And that starts what's called a thirty-day petition period. And the date that it's starting from is the date you adopted that initial resolution. That petition period is for if somebody wants to call for a referendum on the initial resolution, that's what they would be gathering a petition for. And there's a certain number of signatures deployed and so on. So that's what the thirty-day period is for. This applies to any time bonds are being used, right? And bonds are being used for anything that has a repayment beyond ten years. Okay, so it's not just this project. It's, that's just the way of statute three. So you go through this thirty-day petition period, no petitions filed. And then the council has authority to borrow. Doesn't bind you in any way. It just means you have the authority, okay? And we carry it one step further. You could have authority that sits out there for five years. The council did nothing with the authority. It disappeared. It expires. Okay, so it's a statutory process, so that's what your agenda item is related to, is adopting that resolution first. And then the second agenda item is going to be about saying, okay, now we have to have to publish this notice to electors. Okay, so that takes care of both of those items. So that's the initial resolution discussion. And then also on my handout, now at the bottom of page one, is the proposed repayment schedule for that million five seventy-five. And you can see that we have principles starting in the year twenty-twenty-five because realistically, being a four E tid district, you have to wait till the project is undertaken in the ground. And then if there's any opportunity for increment, it would not be valued until one-one of twenty-four. It would come in twenty-five. So everything is kind of several years down the road before you actually are looking at a revenue stream. So we start principal in twenty-five, go to thirty-six, which is the maximum life of the tid. And we have rates, which are estimated rates in, at the time I prepared the report. I can't even say today, because as you know, there's extreme volatility out there. But this report is, at the bottom of the rate column, it says TIC, which stands for true interest cost. And that means that all of the expenses associated with the borrowing are built into that interest rate. And that's what makes it a true interest cost. So that's where it's the four thirty-two, okay? So then you have the interest generated and the total of the principal and interest, which is called debt service. So it's really based on, besides the interest only years, it's what's called a level debt service, which is the type of structure you want for typically for debt districts. Okay, so page two is the, at the top, what's called the preliminary pricing schedule. These were sales that took place on October fourth. And when you want to monitor the market, you're monitoring the yield column, okay? So kind of go to the center where it says maturity value and the column to the left says yield. Okay, those are the yields that you would be monitoring. So if I come back to you and say the rates in the market went up or down, it's gonna be measured against that yield column. And then the column to the right of the maturity value, maturity value are just your principal payments. So a column to the right says price. So you'll see most of them are over one hundred. That means that investors buying the bonds, like a hundred dollars worth of bonds at something more than a hundred dollars. He's fronting his principal. He's giving you more than what you're asking for. So they're what call premium bonds. So in order for him to do that, he wants something in exchange for that. So what he wants is a coupon or a rate that he gets every six months his interest on that's higher than the yield. Okay, so in that case, the first one has a coupon of five percent, the yield is a three thirty-five, because he paid a hundred and three dollars and some cents, right? So that's how his yield goes down to the three thirty-five, even though he's getting a five percent interest rate. So that activity goes through each year. And then that really adds up to the dollar price column on the far right. And you can see at the bottom of that column, you have a million six thirty-nine, nine sixty-five. That's in this scenario, how much the bonds would be sold for, and you have a million five seventy-five a box, right? So you're getting more. So what happens with that difference, that sixty-four thousand dollars difference? Then the underwriter keeps as much of it as is needed to pay all expenses. And expenses would be municipal advisor, your bond counsel, your rating fee and underwriting fees. All of that is what he holds back. And he uses that premium to pay those. Anything that is above and beyond that number comes back to the city. The only thing the city can do with that money is to put it into debt service. So any excess premium goes into debt service. So in this scenario, there are a couple about forty-two hundred dollars of excess premium under purchase price, which that's what brings the true interest cost down to the four point three-two percent. Okay, so that's the pricing activity. That's what I'll be monitoring for the city. Letting you know based on sales that are happening, are we up, are we down, what's going on? You hear a lot about the Federal Reserve meetings, right? There's another one that's approaching in November. Every time they raise the rate, it will affect usually the first, definitely the first five years. Sometimes as much as seven years, but definitely the first five years is where you're gonna see those rates, those yields bump. And that's when sometimes we get into that inverted yield curve because you'll see those yields becoming much, much higher. And then if you looked at something that went out twenty or thirty years, that's gonna be actually lower than those top half, okay? So that's where this inverted yield curve discussion comes from. Is every time the Fed meets, we get more pressure on that short end, okay? So that's what we're gonna be watching now. So that really is the end of my discussion as it relates to your agenda item that you're on as well as the one that follows.
Any questions for Carol? Thank you. Discussion, comments, I'll take the motion.
I'll move to approve initial resolution forty-four eighty-four dash two-two, authorizing one point five seven five million geo-bonds.
Motion by Peterson.
I'll start it then.
Seconded by Gargano. Anything further? All favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two is approved or deny resolution forty-four eighty-five dash twenty-two directing publication of notice to electors related to the bond issue. Any questions on that? I think she discussed what she was talking about there. Has to be noticed. Take the motion. The ones in order.
Motion to approve forty-four eighty-five dash twenty-two.
Motion by Canny. Seconded by Brian. Anything further? All favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Okay, now I'm back on page two of my handout. This is a second financing. Both of these would be on the same timeline, done simultaneously. And this is referred to as a taxable general obligation promissory note. So that means we're going to be, we have a repayment schedule that is under ten years. So it is called a note. Does not require the initial resolution. In order to proceed with that, the council has authority under the note statute. So the notes themselves, right now the issue size is a million six thirty, but they, the purposes are really three purposes. Okay, one would be a, an amount of six hundred and twenty thousand for tid nine, which we call a development incentive. We would have three hundred and thirty-five thousand for a tid eight land acquisition. And seven seventy-five, which is a portion of the cost of the fieldhouse project, okay? They're going to be taxable because they have a private activity component to them, which means that there is some dollars coming in from the private revenue stream. It's not all for a public purpose, like the infrastructure. So that's what makes them taxable. Now that means that they have to be sold in the market as a taxable note. That means you're gonna pay taxable rates, which are higher than tax exempt rates. So the schedule below on page two and shows you that, now this is the combined schedule. Again, there's three purposes, but this is the combined one for marketing. We could, we put them together to go one, from one issue to market. So you can see, starting in twenty-three, we start with a hundred thousand and then it drops to eighty-five and then we're back in the two hundred thousand range. The rates, as you can see, they're all in the fours. And the TIC being a four ninety-eight is because they're sold differently. They're usually the discount buyers, so then you take the expense of issuance and add it to the rate. So it's just a different way of marketing taxable. And that produces the estimated interest column and then the combined principal and interest. Now, again, how we get to this combined schedule is on the next page, okay? So first of all, let me just show you the pricing schedule at the top. This is very typical of a taxable, where the yield column and the coupon or the rate column is the same because that's very typical of a, an investor who buys taxable. That doesn't mean that when we come to actually sell the bonds, that somebody might want to pay premium. If they pay premium, we will have to, again, use any premium dollars for debt service. We can't use it for projects. So that's, we'll have to wait until that time comes in order to, if, you know, I'm not sure because I've seen them come in both ways. But again, that might just be driven by what volatility is occurring on the day of the sale. So that's the structure for the, the pricing for the million six thirty. And the bottom, starting on twenty-three and then moving to page four, is taking that million six thirty issue and splitting it apart and saying, okay, the portion that belongs to tid nine, the five hundred and twenty thousand, is amortized by starting again, principal in twenty-five through thirty. And that's kind of a level debt service and not starting principal until it has an opportunity to repay the debt. And that source of repayment is expected to be the tid nine increment. On page four is the three hundred and thirty-five thousand for tid eight. And again, the same thing, starting principal in twenty-five. And this can only go to twenty-eight because that's the maximum life of that district. So that one is designed to be within that window. And then the fieldhouse, which we call that city purpose. So that is designed to start repayment in twenty-three through thirty. And in that particular schedule, it has the principal, the rate, the estimated interest, and then the total principal and interest. So you can see that's somewhat of a leveled up service. And then I thought I would show you the city's other existing city purpose debts. These are your payments starting in twenty-twenty-two. It was eighty fifty-nine, seven twenty-seven. And then it drops to seven sixty-two. Well, when we bring this debt in, it's gonna be at about the eight eighty level. And it'll stay around there until twenty-thirty. So that's the change from twenty-two to twenty-three, okay? And again, that's, revenue source would be tax levying. So that's just the split up of the issue. The city would be preparing to enter the bond market for both of these issues at the same time. We would be putting the official statement, which is really a prospectus on the city together. We'd also be going through Moody's rating application. And their existing rating is an A-one. That was confirmed in January of twenty-one. Then we distribute market, the documents into the marketplace. And we advertise them, we put them on bidding platforms. We tell the underwriters how to submit their bids, what the rules are, and the date and time. And then we help them with taking those bids. So the next page is just to answer some what if questions. Just charted your debt limit as of, as of now with these two issues included. And you would be, at the end of twenty-twenty-two, you would have fifteen million four oh two remaining. And that would be this. But as of February one of twenty-three, you would have levied and collected your twenty-twenty-three principal payments. So you automatically get it back at that point for twenty-twenty-three. So you would be paying about a million seven thirty of principal. That means that fifteen million four number goes up by a million seven in February. Okay, so that's where you stand. Municipal market, I think we kind of covered that as we talked about the other things. And then the next steps really is the, what's called our authorizing or parameters resolutions. The council has taken action on those in the past. We're anticipating that to happen on November fourteenth at that meeting. You will have two separate resolutions, one for each issue. That's like an award resolution. It basically is giving your city administrator and/or your city clerk, treasurer, finance director, the authority to accept the bids on the day that they actually come in and to sign documentation that officially awards them to the winning bidder. And there are certain parameters that need to be met. And those parameters will be included in those two resolutions. And then it'll basically say, these are the type of principal payments, these are the terms, this is when we're gonna pay interest. There's gonna be a not to exceed interest rate in there. So it pretty much lays out what the terms are that the authority is given for, okay? So those will come to you in November fourteen. And then the timeline after today is really to prepare to go to the market. We will, of course, be in that petition period for the next thirty days, but we still continue to move forward with preparation. First thing we're gonna do is have a Moody's rating call, which is scheduled somewhere between November eighteenth and twenty-second. And then we're planning on taking bids on December eighth at this time. And then we would close on December twenty-eighth. And again, this was working around holidays and availability of people from different firms that are involved in this. But we can always change it if you need to. So that's it. That's all I have.
Any questions for Carol? I appreciate how you thoroughly go through things and it's made very easy for us to follow.
Thanks. That's me at all.
I always appreciate that. Thanks for all your efforts, Carol.
All right.
Just to, just to refresh everyone's recollection, the tid nine borrowing is for the upfront payment for the Hayton Park apartments. The land acquisition is the K Street in South Albert in tid eight, and then the fieldhouse.
All right, very good. We'll go to recommendations from boards, committees, and commissions. We have one item. Line commission, the second reading and public hearing on ordinance nineteen forty-five dash twenty-two, amending the city code, chapter six ninety zoning as relates to various zoning standards. Brian, how you doing?
Good, thank you, Mayor. So yeah, just some miscellaneous amendments here posing. First one on section dash twelve, it gets rid of the, removes the resolution requirement for zoning board decisions. Section nineteen is the, gets rid of some redundancies and also moves some standards from the conditional use section to the site plan section because everything for the plant commission, the site plan, not everything's a conditional use. The mobile home park section gets rid of the, or just get rid of, but for the three existing mobile home parks we have in town right now, none of them can meet that forty-foot setback. So we had to do a few variances over the years for that. So that would just be, they would just have to meet the normal zoning setbacks or zoning standards for the R two zone that they're all in. Thirty-three, again, these are site plan standards. Gets rid of some redundancies, moves a couple of sections from the conditional use section to this. Also talks about physical buffers, which has been a more common requirement now for a lot of things, with fences and landscaping and so on. Parking requirements that right now there are two minimum standards, either ten by eighteen or nine by twenty. So the plant commission decided, what, ten by eighteen for minimum? And then the last one is the, removes the sign that spanned the main street here in front and moves it down to the airport. And also the plant commission wanted to have sort of a catchall that any other sign that's approved at city property would fall into this as well. Questions?
Any questions for Brian before I take public hearing? Thanks, Brian. All right, now we'll take public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against the adoption of ordinance nineteen forty-five dash twenty-two? Anyone wish to speak for or against the adoption of ordinance nineteen forty-five dash twenty-two? Final call. Anyone wish to speak for or against the adoption of ordinance nineteen forty-five dash twenty-two? Anyone who wants to close public hearing, take it to council for discussion or motion? Motion by Gargano. Second? Seconded by Canny. Jake, go call. Never be ready. Brian?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Gargano? Canny?
Aye.
Friends?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Hudson?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Motion carries. Thanks, Brian. Commission, committee, board of staff reports. His work preservation.
We met tonight. Our, most of our discussion was around, we'd hired Headstones and Blooms to.
Our, most of our discussion is around, we'd hired Headstones and Blooms to clean some of the stones up at the cemetery. She was up there, did a really fabulous job. If you have a chance to go through, she cleaned the two for the Nishans, the two for Ruds, and then Webb and Pettits. And she's using chemicals like they use at Arlington, so our cemetery is being preserved pretty well with some of those major figures in our history. So, very big difference, and then stuff continues to work for a few weeks. She's gonna do a few more. So we have a few more on the list yet that we're gonna get yet this year. And hopefully building towards a cemetery tour with some historical, who the people were, hopefully next year.
Good stuff. Thank you very much. Personnel committee.
Personnel briefly met last Monday, and Tim just presented a target for the traditional employees and then the restructuring and target for the dispatch. And this is the second time going through, I guess, the modern market adjustment phases we went through. And dispatch was the first one, the last go. And so that'll be coming up in the budget and see how Tim and Jacob do with the numbers.
Very good, thank you. Uh, plant commission, we don't meet until tomorrow, so nothing new for them. Uh, any other committee or commission that I missed?
Ambulance commission.
Yes, ambulance.
Uh, we met, we received some updates on the garage addition. It's gonna be going off the bed, and we should have some front-up numbers here next winter, so moving forwards. Making progress.
Anyone else? All right, off to the merit.
I have a couple things I wanna make sure I touch on. I had a couple people ask me, and mostly posts on Facebook. But leaf pickup started today. It'll go through November seventeenth. Make sure you leave your leaf at the tree bank and don't put them in the street. That clogs up the storm, so we don't need that because eventually the rain, one of these days again.
One other thing I wanna touch on too that's new, the school district started what's called the den. It's a food marketplace for students and community members as well. They're working with Second Harvest Food Bank. They get deliveries on Mondays and Thursdays, Mondays and Wednesdays. And they're actually doing handouts for community members from three-thirty to five-thirty on Mondays and Thursdays. So if you know anyone in need, make sure you send them on down. They're doing it by door six, which would be the north side of the high school building. I know the need is there. I think they completely got rid of all their food the first two times that they had it, so they had it here today again. And I know a lot of students are taking advantage of it as well for snack items and even some stuff to take home, so. It's good stuff. I'm glad that's going on, not just here at the food pantry, but we have another option for people as well. All right, we'll go around the horseshoe. Dave Knutson?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Phil Peterson?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Missy Friends?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay.
Nothing tonight.
Max?
Nothing, thank you.
Jake from City Hall? Tim?
Nothing, sir.
Gargano?
Today is National Mental Health Day, just saying.
Jason Schulte?
Nothing tonight.
Darren Fry?
Nothing.
Tease me again. Yeah, all right, with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So will.
Motion by Gargano, seconded by Fry. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Didn't think so. Motion carries. Thanks, everybody.